We are six, so the meeting will come to order. The time is now five thirty-one P M on Monday, December nineteenth, twenty twenty-two. This is a regular meeting of the District of Columbia Commission on the Arts and Humanities. My name is Reggie Van Lee, Chairperson of the Commission. I am wearing a black turtleneck sweater today, an African American man. I will now call the role. When you hear your name, please answer present. Stacy Lee Banks.
Present.
Cormas Berry. Maggie Fitzpatrick.
Present.
Bonnie's Floyd. Natalie Hopkinson. Kimber Minkitty. Mariah Rooney.
Present.
Carla Sims.
Present.
Hector Torres.
Present.
Gretchen Horton.
Present.
A Corum is present, thank you. This is a meeting of a public body held in open session in accordance with the Open Meetings Act. Notice of the meeting was posted on the Commission's website, D C arts dot D C dot gov, and on the D C Office of Open Governments Central Meetings Calendar. The meeting is being conducted remotely using the Cisco Webex Virtual Meeting Platform and is being livestreamed to the Commission's YouTube channel. An electronic recording of the meeting will be available for viewing online following the conclusion of the meeting. I will now read the land acknowledgement. Every community owes its existence and vitality to generations from around the world who contributed their hopes, dreams, and energy to making the history that led to this moment. Some were brought here against their will, some were drawn to leave their distant homes and hope of a better life, and some have lived on this land for more generations than can be counted. Truth and acknowledgement are critical to building mutual respect and connection across all barriers of heritage and difference. We begin this effort to acknowledge what has been buried by honoring the truth. We stand on the ancestral lands of the Takotank and the Biscadoi people. We pay respects to the elders past and present. Please take a moment to consider the many legacies of violence, displacement, migration, and settlement that bring us together here today. And please join us in uncovering such truths at any and all public events and to use such truths to guide the legacy of this Arts Commission. The agenda for this meeting was previously circulated. Is there any objection to the agenda? Here, no objection, the agenda stands as adopted. I would like to first wish everyone a happy Hanukkah and an upcoming happy holidays for the various holidays many of us celebrate. We have quite a full agenda today, so I will not belabor the issue with too many comments, but I certainly reserve the right to insert in the conversation the things that would have been at my welcome. But I do want to welcome you. This is our last meeting of the calendar year, not fiscal year, the calendar year. And so I'm hoping that people will have a restful, rejuvenating holiday season. In our usual process, to remind us why we're here and to keep the arts front and center in our mind, tonight's presentation comes from guest artist Haley Cutler, a five-time recipient of the D C Commission on the Arts Humanities Artist Fellowship Grant. Haley is a choreographer, performer, artist organizer, and dance educator. She is the founder and artistic director of Darling Dance, a project-based dance company in its eleventh season, and co-founder of Artist Neighbor Collective, a curatorial performance project born in the pandemic and grown in the new year. As a maker and performer, she aims to portray what total autonomy looks like for female and femme-identifying bodies in public spaces. As an educator, she works with a diverse range of populations, including university dance majors, young pre-professional dancers, adults with intellectual disabilities, professional dance artists, and families in transitional housing. Haley's presence in the dance field is centered in the feminist dance canon, in fair pay advocacy for artists, in mentorship and feedback, and in the simple belief that what's good for the community is good for the individual artist. Please join me in welcoming Commission-grantee Haley Cutler.
Hi, Reggie, thank you so much. I think that bio might be a little bit out of date. I'm not sure where you got that. I think I'm, at this point, maybe a seven-time recipient and in my, coming up on my, what I call my bat mitzvah year of having a dance company, so coming up on my thirteenth season.
Well, congratulations.
I am sharing today, I'm sharing today an excerpt from my latest work, All My Friends. This was a site-specific work commissioned by the Kennedy Center in twenty nineteen and finally premiered in September of twenty twenty-two after COVID delays and some personal loss. And this work actually received two P E Fs, one that I ended up returning during COVID because of delays, and then again when it was ready to actually premiere. So I'm very grateful to the D C Commission for that support. This work also received support from, again, the Kennedy Center and the Foundation for Contemporary Arts. I'm going to show just a quick clip of an evening-length work. This is towards the end of the work, and the work was inspired by childhood field days and what I call open-air friendship. You'll see five dancers, costumes by Farron Kelly, and our lighting was timed very meticulously with the sunset over the course of a year and a lot of experimentation. And the sound of the public watching, a lot of children, and planes nearby and the traffic. So Patrick, if you can, Patrick has the video to queue up. And we just need the volume on this. This is not the sound, I'm not sure what's happening.
Patrick, perhaps we could start from the beginning and see if we can get the sound?
Yeah, I had queued up, I had asked Patrick to queue up at about twenty-nine minutes in, it might, he might have needed to let it buffer, sure.
Let's try this again. Before I make it bigger, let me play it here to see if it works. Is the sound coming through? Yes. It's still not listening.
No.
Sounds not coming through.
Sorry about our technology challenges, they are ongoing.
Where is this being filmed?
That's the Kennedy Center, that's in front of the reach.
At the, yeah, in front of the reach, thank you. That's what I think. As I said, this was a site-specific work at the Kennedy Center. Okay, I missed that, sorry. That's okay.
Can you perhaps tell us about it even in the absence of the video while we try to?
Sure, yeah, yeah, disappointed to see that there are some tech issues, but I commissioned, I proposed this work to the curatorial team at the Kennedy Center after, shortly after the reach opened, maybe about a year after the reach opened, and I had seen some dance there, but the dance that I had seen, I felt was sort of plopped there. It was sort of just dropped into the space, and I thought that that space was so magnificent. It reserved a work that was really, truly site-specific. So I proposed this work that sort of rambled through the space, and we really took advantage of every inch of that space. We operated on a lot of ask forgiveness, not permission, with the places that we sort of inserted ourselves into in the space. So there was a bit of a dance between us and the Kennedy Center about what our limits were in the space, and we created every single piece of movement and every single vocalization that you see in here, in the work onsite. So we rehearsed through the winter, winter very cold, we couldn't anymore, and over the period of two sort of tough years of rehearsing, we really went fully into the site-specific experience, and it was really exciting. Every inch of movement was inspired by games that we would play in the space. We would huddle in areas that felt a little bit scarier and maybe edgier to us and then experiment with movement in places where we felt joyful and ultimately made this dance that really spoke to public and private experiences in a big public space. We also had an audience ultimately of about two hundred and fifty people, which we could never have planned for, so there was a lot of maneuvering that happened the day of the show, where in the moment of the performance happening, there were simply too many people standing where the dancers had intended to go and do something. So my incredible dancers, who are part of the greater, really incredible D C dance community, the D C modern and postmodern dance community, they really worked on the fly. It was truly very postmodern in its feeling of sort of it being a happening, and they really were incredible at navigating a lot of obstacles in the moment. So very, very proud of them and of the work.
Now, this may be too grandiose and too ethereal on my part, but one of my personal aspirations for the Commission is that somehow every D C resident feels the transformative power of the Arts and Humanities. And with those two hundred-plus people being so close to the performance, how, what was the reaction of the audience? And how, if at all, did we move towards that sort of aspiration that I have?
Yeah, that's a, thank you for that question, that's a wonderful question. So the most exciting response was really from children, and I do not make my work for kids at all. My work is often not necessarily child-friendly, but the nature of this work sort of spoke to that. And I absolutely loved that the kids, some of whom I knew, some of whom I were strangers to me, really were absolutely immersed in the work. They had no problem in, hopefully we can get this clip up, but there are kids just chasing after these dancers, and they had a really incredible experience with it. A lot of folks who see dance regularly, I think, had the response that they enjoyed sort of the informal, maybe, nature of it, even though the process of making this was incredibly formal and difficult, but they enjoyed sort of the freedom that came with experiencing it that is not shared necessarily when you're sitting in a theater space. And I think that felt good for people based on the timeline that we're in with COVID and feeling a lot of restrictions. And then folks who came and who do not have regular access to dance were excited that they had happened upon it. They had a lot of questions about what is this about? And I had a lot of discussions about, you know, it's about the experience that you're having, and it's about, it's about our experience making it. It's not necessarily about this sort of external narrative, it's really about you having a time, whether you're enjoying it or whether you're disturbed by it. Yeah, we had a lot of people saying, like, I've never had to run after a dance company before, so.
Now, that is my experience as well, when I've been able to enjoy rehearsals up close, hearing the dancers breathing, seeing the perspiration, seeing the struggle, even though it looks smooth from a distance, you can see some of the trembling. That is much more expressive to me than sitting back twenty rows and looking at a stage and trying to enjoy it. There's a note in the chat saying that even though we can't hear the sound, perhaps we could still see the visual. So Patrick, perhaps you can still show the visual, and maybe this time the sound will work, but if not, let's watch the visual.
One more time, let's see.
The shaking of the head, what's going on there?
That was a response to a moment in the site that made its way into the dance. There were a million small moments like that. Yeah, a gesture that just felt right for the space, based on one of our dancers' responses to it.
You know, I'm loving this, I'm loving this.
Thank you, I'm not sure who said that, but thank you so much.
Any other questions or comments while we're watching it? You don't understand anyway. Questions, comments, commission staff?
I wish I had been there. You can tell the Kennedy Center to recommission it.
Congratulations, is it gonna be on, are you gonna do it again in different places?
You know, I, something that is a thorn in my side about dance and has been since I made it my career is that dance does not get the same longevity that theater and visual art get. So this was three years of work total, and it lasted for about twenty minutes, and that was it. So it was a one-night run. I would love to do it again, but it would have to be there because it was really made for that space, it could not exist anywhere else. This was one of our moments where we really asked forgiveness, not permission, and we had been told a few times about teachers, and so we just didn't tell anyone that this was happening until we did it.
And I'm watching this, I can't imagine the Kennedy Center gave you preapproval for this.
Sometimes as an artist, you gotta do what you gotta do.
Awesome.
Loving this. And it must be awesome for the performers as well, though it's challenging, but to have that opportunity to be so close to the audience and to, like you said, make some adjustments, make some pivots, improvise, it must be refreshing for them as well.
Yes, and I want to add that I had some docents who were doing the job of making sure that the dancers were safe, because oftentimes when you do a public performance, when there is no separation between the dancers and the audience, you just have to make sure that you're keeping an eye on everybody and that everybody is being safe. And so that was something that was really important to me. I've been doing site-specific work for over a decade and know that that is a thing that comes up sometimes.
Good.
I would encourage you, you know, to maybe do a series or a sequel of these, and in particular, one of the locations would be just amazing if you were to engage a gully of debt. Right, so we happen to be going through a technical challenge today. Hey, I can't hear it, but actually, you know, in certain locations, that's the experience. And so I'd be very curious how, you know, you would play around and adapt this to different settings.
Yeah, I don't know that I'm the right person to do that, as I am not, don't know a whole lot about that community, unfortunately, but, and this work especially really needs, it really is about the sort of vocalizations and things that are happening in the space, but I do appreciate that perspective.
Well, good, if you may, I'm going to wrap this up, I'm not sure how much longer the video is, but any other questions from anyone, comments? Otherwise, we thank you, we're proud of you being one of our recipients, seven times versus five, so that's good, and keep it going, please.
Thank you so much, thank you all for having me, really an honor to come and share with you all, thank you.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Bye.
Goodbye. So we have several speakers scheduled to give public comments. Speakers, when I call your name, will have three minutes for your comments, at which point I may ask you to conclude your remarks in the interest of time, and as you approach the three minutes, I may clear my throat, which is an attempt at a polite way to say your time is almost up. Our first speaker is Masipula Sirole Jr. from Rhythm for Recovery.
Hello, thank you, wishing everybody well. I'm a disability advocate for African art and African ownership in D C over the years. Thank you to the Commission on Arts and Humanities, you've been doing wonderful work over the years. I received my first grant this year through the Relief and Recovery Program. I'm very encouraged by the task force on equity, inclusion, and belonging that I believe was introduced in twenty twenty. I would love to participate and also personally, but also encourage participation in the various programs and platforms that the, that C H, C A H, the Commission creates going forward. I will leave it there, I shared some remarks for the record, but I guess I should, I'll leave it there to allow space for others. Let me just share one recommendation. If we could create a way, a series of awards to acknowledge accessibility, both among, you know, just practitioners and also personnel, I think that would, that would, that would be very helpful for everybody going forward.
Good, well, you should know that one of our standing committees for the Commission is the Committee on Inclusion, Diversity, Equity, and Access. And so those members of that committee, I'm asking them to perk their ears up as we think about things we do, including awards in the category you've just talked about. And I think there had been some conversation about it, but I don't want to make a commitment, let's give it to the committee to ponder and come back with a recommendation. But thank you, thank you so much.
Hey, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next presenter, Yevgen Nymchenko on Conflicted Art, from Conflicted Art. Mr. Nymchenko, are you here?
Yes, yes, I'm here, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Hello, Commission, members, and all who are present here, thank you very much for giving me an opportunity to speak. My name is Yevhen Nymchenko, and I have created a private initiative that I called Conflicted Art. I'm an American citizen of Ukrainian descent, but I have lived in both Russia and Ukraine for a very long time before moving to the United States about twenty years ago. I've been collecting art for over ten years, and after the invasion, I began buying Ukrainian art that was created after the beginning of the war and shipping it to the United States in order to provide some financial assistance to the artists over there. I started conducting interviews with those artists in order to see what they were trying to say by those pieces, and as the material accumulated, I created a website, conflictedart.com, and I began contacting galleries around the city in order to display my collection. Eventually, the Arts Club of Washington gave me a show in October twenty-two, which happened successfully. All twenty years that I lived in the States, I lived in the D C area. I saw it grow into a third-most populated combined statistical area in the nation, and I feel a deep connection with the city, and I became a native here. Due to this war, I believe there's a cultural shift that is coming that we'll be comparing to Irish, comparable to Irish migration of the late nineteenth century or to the post-World War II Japanese cultural influence. We already see that half of Hollywood is wearing stylized Ukrainian folk-embroidered clothes, and many actors like Mila Kunis or Leonardo DiCaprio, who didn't really care if they were pointed out their Russian roots, are now actually emphasizing their connection specifically to Ukraine. This completely changes the perspective on the origins and culture of that part of the world. I believe that D C cannot stand aside while other, more established immigrant cities are playing the main role in defining and shaping those changes. The goal of the Conflicted Art Project is to make sure that D C is plugged in and instrumental in this inevitable cultural exchange. I want our American culture to become even more diverse and richer from this, and consequently to have even more stronger footprint around the world. At this time, I have organized two exhibits, the one that I already mentioned in the Arts Club of Washington, and another one that's happening in the Il Canale Restaurant in Georgetown, and there's another one in the works for February. Other efforts include the artistic residency of a Ukrainian artist in D C that is being discussed with the Lost Origins Gallery in Mount Pleasant, and another one for a D C-based artist in Ukraine after the beginning of the war. And also, I'm looking at murals or sculpture, as the set of the artists that I'm working with is very diverse, and the other efforts involve me speaking at the International Association for Creative Arts in Education and Therapy in February and other panels. Thank you very much for letting me present my project in this meeting, and I hope it was interesting for the committee to learn about my efforts and what I'm trying to do.
Thank you, thank you. We'll make sure that you're on the radar screen of both our Grants Committee and our Public Arts Committee, because I think you fit in both of those categories. So thank you, thank you for this exposure.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ida Campbell. Is Ida Campbell here? Ida Campbell? Perhaps she'll come back later. We can go to Max Broad, D C Voters for Animals Education Fund. Mr. Broad, are you here?
Yes, I am.
Good.
Hey, hi there, lovely to be on with you all. I just want to thank Chairman Van Lee and the Commissioners for your work to strengthen our community's cultural identity, and I'm here to talk about an idea for a sustainable fashion show. I know this is something that the Commission on the Arts and Humanities has invested in before, and I think it's something that we should continue to champion for multiple reasons. One is just, you know, further refining and celebrating D C's wonderful identity of fashion and, you know, the way in our self-expression. I think D C has some magnificent designers who really go under the radar and a strong design culture that can be really celebrated. I think harnessing sustainability as a way to do that is just a really cool step that we can take. And so, you know, I appreciate the Commission's previous investments in sustainable fashion. What I'd love to work with the Commission on is putting together a design showcase that we can host at an art gallery, culminating with a fashion show that features sustainable materials, especially materials made from plants grown in the mid-Atlantic region, locally sourced, and also, you know, harnessing, you know, the D C natives, the BIPOC designers who are throughout the city but deserve more recognition. And so I'm just, you know, speaking today to propose, you know, discussing a project that would, you know, highlight some of these designers and provide them with the materials to, the sustainable materials to elevate and emphasize, you know, fashion creativity that is worthy of our city's pride. Thank you so much.
Good, thank you, thank, I know we have supported this notion before, so hopefully we can continue. Thank you, thank you. Next, our speaker would have been Jenny Billfield from the Washington Performing Arts, but she sent a note saying she'd like to wait for a future meeting, so we look forward to hearing from Ms. Billfield at a future meeting. Let's go on to Graham Smith White. Is he here?
I am here.
Great, thank you.
How's it going, everybody? Members of the Commission, thank you for having me. I am Graham Smith White, a local musician and advocate for the music community in D C and the region. And I wish to speak today about the opportunity for a new census of the music community that will be taking place in early 2023. This will follow on the 2019 endeavor undertaken by the Mayor's Office in partnership with Georgetown University and Consultant Sound Music Cities, which had over 2,600 respondents from professionals in the region, with almost half living in DC. This study highlighted some of the successes and opportunities of our unique music capital, but was unfortunately shelved and never released publicly. I have access to some of this information and want to share some of it with you in hopes of garnering support from the Commission on this coming undertaking as a community partner and potential funding contributor to understand how this can impact and inform what you do as a really wonderful and worthwhile agency. So these include a significant desire for mid and executive level industry training, the type of training and professional development that the Commission on the Arts and Humanity can and should support for artists and does with some of your grants and programs. A significantly small portion of the musicians fund their work via grants at just 8%. And in my experience as a professional, this is due to mismatches in project and funding timelines. Sometimes you need the money when you're only able to apply for it, and when you're able to apply for it, you're done with the project type of things. And this is reflected in the census responses with 45% of the respondents requesting short-term grants. Relatedly, there's a significant opportunity as a grant-making agency with budgets of respondents' projects reported typically under $2,500, which is not a whole lot of money for a grant-making agency. That's all I have to share right now, and I'm happy to answer any questions or follow up later with any further information.
Great. Well, we thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Amy Austin from Theater Washington and Reg Douglas, Mosaic Theater, are you on?
Hello.
Hi.
Hello.
Yeah, hi. I can begin, and then I'll turn that over to Reg. I'll dive right in to get these, get it off quick. So I'm head of Theater Washington. We're an association for theater organization, education groups, theater practitioners and audiences, and I'm here to raise level of awareness of the state of the theater industry and how our road to recovery looks as we go through, continue to go through, the pandemic. We work with 84 organizations. Two-thirds of those are DC-based. In this growing theater destination, we have a diverse array of theaters and venues, as you know. The theaters all have a vast array of programming, visions, missions, and we have a really strong history of working together. It was the industry, all of the industry was really hard hit during the pandemic and continues to face difficult hardships with a long road to recovery. During this continuous time, we've banded together over many issues, including a unified mask mandate for the safety of our audiences, staff, artists and production teams that we kept in place for over a year. And as far as I know, there was no collective effort like that in the country. The box office numbers right now show a really slow return and continued unpredictability. Audiences are making decisions at the last minute, leaving to uncertainty in revenue planning. There's cancellations of weeks or weekends or days of shows due to COVID outbreaks that often can't be redone or rescheduled. This has happened in every theater. COVID safety management comes as a cost with venue upgrades. Ticket revenue is generally about 60% of a theater's revenue on an annual basis. It's never been guaranteed. This uncertainty can lead to decisions to produce fewer and smaller shows, which lead to lack of job opportunities for the workforce. In 2019, Actors Equity named DC the fastest-growing theater town. We have more equity jobs than any other city outside of New York, and we want to continue to be the city where artists can grow and thrive. This is a growing crisis, and we need collective impact to raise the visibility of the work of the theaters of all sizes, to draw the audiences back. We want to work together to ensure the ability of our organizations and practitioners to thrive, find collective ways to reach new and existing audiences with promotion, raise awareness of the industry as an economic generator that it is, making sure we're part of the larger conversations in the city and planning.
Sorry to interrupt you, but your conclusions are done. But I think we should give Mr. Douglas a chance. And then I need to understand specifically, how can the Commission help? I hear the challenge, but I want to make sure we understand what role we might play. But Mr. Douglas, take a moment, perhaps?
I'll be very brief and say that what Amy is saying, what we're seeing on this call is the power of community, and we in DC are a proud, working-together collaborative community. Mosaic opened our season with a production of the Till Trilogy, using theater to honor a moment from our collective history. And we worked with over 30 arts and culture organizations, from the Library of Congress to Arena Stage to Anacostia Community Museum, to make sure that every ward of our district and beyond was touched by this powerful story about our history and who we are and who we could be. That is what drives all of the DC theater community, is a desire to bring people together and to do it in a way that is safe, and that's also brave. And so as we look towards with courage, we are not giving up. We are remaining resilient, but we do need your support, particularly in efforts for visibility. We have a real struggle with the Washington Post and getting great coverage beyond the theater page, alone on the theater page. So your support for media outreach and marketing efforts will be a very, very, very impactful change for all of our theater companies. And additional funding to support the need for continued COVID safety, as well as making sure we are providing all of our staff members a living wage. We are very proud to say that at Mosaic, everyone on our staff is now receiving a living wage in DC. We need more support to continue that work so that we can build a robust, diverse and well-paid arts community.
Great. Thank you. And for those who know me, I do not believe in starving artists. So I want to make sure, your last one, and well-paid is really important to me.
Thank you.
So thank you. Thank you very much. Has Ms. Ida Campbell returned or joined us yet? Ms. Campbell? Well, thank you. And again, apologies for rushing through and trying to abide by the three minutes, because the voice of the public is really critical to the work we do. So though we may cut you short, please sign up. If you didn't get enough said in one meeting, sign up again for the next meeting, because that input is really critical to us. I'm acutely aware of the fact that we exist because the taxpayers fund this commission. And so this is your money that we are administering, and therefore, your voice is important to us. So thank you. Thank you to all of our public comment presenters.
Chairman Ben Lee?
Yes.
I was just wondering if we might, it sounds like Ms. Austin and the gentleman that spoke before as well have some data that might be useful to us in terms of our ongoing work. Is there a way that some of the recommendations that they've posited and submitted might be submitted in writing so that we could be fully aware of those?
Ms. Austin, Mr. Douglas, is that possible?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Thank you for that offer. We do, we did two studies during, one just recently last fall about audiences and their return rate. One of the things that I would like to advocate for, if there's a way to get funding to do even, to do more research to see what the whole playing field is, deeper research than we can do right now. And, but we're happy to present lots of what we spoke about and more in our written testimony.
Great. Great. So I'm getting a note saying that we have more speakers. I'm trying to abide by my agenda, which says that we had seven speakers. Do we have more speakers? Jeff, are you on the line?
Yeah, I think Jessica or Amber was invited by Carla to speak.
Okay. So yes, please. My apologies. Proceed.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Amber Golden. I am here representing Duke Ellington School of the Arts. I am a parent, PTO and board member, along with Jessica Wodach, who is also a parent and LSEP member at Duke Ellington. As you all know, Duke Ellington is the sole public arts high school in DC. We specialize in school for scholar-artists, serving students from all eight wards. They have 10 schools from 8:00 AM, 8:30 AM to about 5:00 PM, actually much later than that when we have rehearsals. And they graduate with both a high school diploma and a pre-professional arts endorsement. We have eight departments, and we have been a public, we're founded as a public-private partnership, and our history goes back into the 1960s. So I want to thank the Commission, one, for this opportunity to speak, as well as their ongoing support of the school. What most people don't know about the school and its public-private partnership is that in 2000, there was a procurement contract that was established to have the Duke Ellington School of the Arts Project run the Duke Ellington School, but maintain it as a public school option at the time when charter schools were introduced into the educational landscape. In terms of governance, we have a board made up by members from GW, the Kennedy Center, DCPS, as well as community members and alumni. So with that contract, it's really important to stress this because it gives us autonomy to maintain the integrity of the arts, the pre-professional arts program in all the disciplines. And I'll let Jessica turn it over to Jessica so she can jump into a bit about the negotiations that have made the news and that we're currently in the middle of resolving to ensure several factors important to running the school effectively.
Thanks again for having us. I'm Jessica Wodach. As Amber said, I'm a parent. I'm also, both Amber and I are native Washingtonians, DC public school graduates. I'm also one of the founders of Two Rivers Public Charter School, recipient of your support over the years, and was the director there for a long time. But speaking for Duke Ellington, we have been negotiating with the DC public schools to try and get a new agreement moved forward. And there are some things that we have been successful with, and some we're still working on and could use help from the Commission. So one that I think you'll be delighted to hear is moving forward is that we have been working in partnership with DCPS and Ossi to create a pathway for artists to become certified as teachers without a teaching credential. So to recognize experience in the arts. Some of our teachers at Duke Ellington have the highest honors you can achieve. They have Tony Awards. They have done amazing things, but they don't have that teaching degree. So we've been working with the state education office to create that pathway that would recognize our teachers as certified teachers. So that is moving forward positively. We've also gotten agreement from DCPS that D-SAP, which is this public, the body that Amber was talking about, should be over the arts program at Duke Ellington. Right now, we have artists and arts educators making sure that that program sticks truly to its purpose. But there are a few places that we're struggling. Amber, did you want to share those?
Sure. We still have additional nuances to work out about the role of the governance board for the role of D-SAP in terms of the governance of the school. Most important is the role of the principal and who has the authority to hire and oversee that role. It currently resides with D-SAP Board, which of course, DCP has, DCPS has a seat, but they want full control. But it's important to note that the principal serves as the advocate to ensure the fidelity of the arts program and not be swayed by the pressures of changing administrations, whether it's at the mayoral level or the chancellor's level. They're able to do student-centered decision-making. What's at risk is the opportunities to provide accessible arts education, and it would remove that autonomy. One simple example is when we were returning from COVID, when the DCPS chancellor said, "No arts in the schools", we actually had to fight to maintain the arts programming because that's what we needed to happen in person. But we really had to fight and advocate for that with DCPS. But if it was a DCPS principal, again, they would have to follow those mandates, and then that would undermine the integrity of the program. The other issue is pay equity. DCPS does not pay teachers that do not have the teaching credentials, the same as other teachers. And so making sure that all of our working artists have pay equity, so they're getting paid the same rate for doing that same work. And so that is still a sticking point that we are working toward.
So what I'm going to ask is Hector Torres, who chairs our Arts Education Committee, is on the call. I'm going to ask that he engage with you all in that committee to see if and how we can be helpful. I mean, we have certain mandates and certain voice on some things we can't cover. So I think that that committee can better understand. And then David with the staff will help us understand, you know, where we can be helpful. Certainly, we support arts education, and certainly, Duke Ellington is an important institution in Washington DC. So we have a great interest in being a part of the solution.
Thank you so much. That would be wonderful.
Good. Hector, I was hoping, I hope it's okay for me to volunteer you like that, Hector.
And that's okay. It's perfectly fine.
Yeah, great.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Did I miss anyone else? Did Ms. Campbell join, or is there anyone else who was supposed to get public comments? Thank you. If not, I'll go to the Director's Report. David Markey, you're on.
Thanks, Reggie. Good evening, everyone. My name is David Markey. I am the interim Executive Director. I'm a middle-aged white man with short gray hair and some facial hair, and I'm wearing a light green shirt. And I will be brief to move things along. I know there's some exciting items coming up on the agenda. A quick reminder, we're two months into, just over two months into the new fiscal year, and over half of the agency is working towards pushing 900 grantees forward. There are paperwork associated with their grants and trying to get them closer to the creation of a purchase order and ultimately a payment. I cannot overemphasize the importance of this and the heavy lift that it is. So just want to give a really special thanks to the Grants Department, the Public Art Department and the Arts Ed Department in that process. It is not easy. This year, it became a little bit more difficult to talk about technology challenges. We have a new integrated financial system, and there's some nascent challenges that we face there. And so not only are we working internally to do that, but we're also working with our colleagues across agencies. Coupled with that, where grant managers are engaged in debriefings with applicants, with individuals and organizations, those who were successful in securing a grant this year and those who were not successful. We really genuinely do want folks to be successful in our process and to help them along. So I know our grant managers spend a lot of time working with applicants to ensure they're putting the strongest application forward and providing them with the hope that the next fiscal year is just around the corner as well. Coupled with that, we are wrapping up FY '22. We issued 1,400 awards, and we have 1,400 associated reports to approve. So hopefully, there'll be a little bit of quiet time in the next week or so, and grant managers will be able to dig into those and approve them and tie FY '22 up with a bow. We have a couple of current grant opportunities for FY '23. For those of you who are not familiar with the agency, we push the majority of our awards out at the beginning of the fiscal year. But we do have a couple of additional ones that are current. One is the Facilities and Buildings Relief Grant, or FABR, as it's fondly known. That has been open for almost a month and is scheduled to close tomorrow evening. This is the third year of this grant program, and it was designed to, as the name might suggest, to provide some relief to organizations, arts and humanities organizations, in helping them pay their mortgages or leases on spaces during and post-COVID. And we have just over 100 drafting or submitted applications at the moment. And so we'll have a final number for you next time, next time we meet. In the Public Art Department, I believe this is also the third year of this program, is the Color the Curb School Safety Program. The plan is to have four elementary schools participate this year in Ward 1, Ward 6 and Ward 8. It's a collaborative design and placemaking project that was created through a partnership of CAH, the District's Department of Transportation and the DC Public School System. And the goal is to increase pedestrian safety by painting ground murals and curb extensions outside or near schools in the district. The selected schools underwent a study through DDOT Safety Roots to School Program. Applications went to panel this past Friday, and CAH will select four artists with schools, who will work with schools to create the grand mural. And those schools are HD Cook Elementary in Ward 1, Boone Elementary and Henley Elementary in Ward 8, and Minor Elementary in Ward 6. In terms of programming, there are some programs that have already launched, such as Create and Thrive and Words on Fire. So thanks to the folks in the Arts Ed Department, Alorie and Camille, who are moving those along. Another piece that we're getting ready to launch is our Business of the Arts series. This will be, oh gosh, I don't know how many years now, probably. Uh, this will be, oh gosh, I don't know how many years now, probably eight or 10 years that we've had this uh, series of, of workshops. In the last couple of years, we've built out on them. Uh, so now it's a, a pretty robust set of offerings that takes place between February uh, and May each year. And, and I believe last year there were over two thousand people participated in them. There were a series of workshops, moderated panels, that type, type of thing.
And if I can interrupt just for a minute, David, here and in the next one you'll talk about. I think our real challenge is to get more people there to participate. I've attended it. They're fantastic sessions, but they're so underattended that it's, it's sort of frustrating and unfortunate. So we're gonna put some real energy into marketing, advertising, whatever you wanna call it, to make sure that more people benefit from the really good programming that the commission puts forward. Just wanted to make that.
Yeah. No, that, that's great Reggie. And, and sort of coupled with that, now that we're sort of, this is our third year, I think we're, we're trying to plan ahead, plan the series so that, you know, hopefully will um, be helpful to the Marketing and Communications Department that they can look at the series as a whole and engage in a marketing effort or around it. In previous years, we were sort of piecing it together as we went, which made it a little bit more difficult for uh, the marketing folks to, to do their thing. Um, a highlight coming up and from the Public Art Department is um, uh, we have a part of the Art Bank um, that is uh, in residence, as it were, at the Martin Luther King Junior Library. Um, uh, and so Lauren and her, uh, I think Ron and Sarah in the Public Art Department um, are planning on hosting two artist talks i- in February and March to really build off uh, the work that um, that is uh, in residence there. Um, these panels will begin a sort of a, a moderated artist discussion. The first scheduled to take place in February is entitled MLK's Beloved Community and the DC Art Bank. And will be an exploration of how the Art Bank collection on the walls of the library brings Dr. uh, King's teachings to life. And then the second panel, uh, which is scheduled to take place in March is called Opening Channels of Cultural Communication: Stories from the Art Bank. Uh, and um, and will coincide with a DC History Conference, which is scheduled to take place in March. And that panel will provide some insight into how uh, both the social history and the artistic approaches on view at the library showcase the power of the arts to open channels for communication. So two really exciting workshops that are coming up uh, in the winter, early spring. And more information on both of those uh, will follow. Um, uh, I will mention, you know, I've added this the last couple of times that uh, staff, while they're really, really busy, um, they do, they really are reflective practitioners. Um, last month I mentioned the deep dive uh, that staff uh, grant managers were doing into the panel process. Um, uh, last month, uh, the Grants and IDEA committees convened a, a revamp to do a deep dive into grant processes. Um, we understand that it's iterative, um, the needs of the community change all the time. And so we want to make sure that our grant programs uh, really reflect, uh, reflect those needs. Um, among the items that were discussed at the, the revamping in November, uh, included a review of the scoring criteria for grant programs and also a possible revision of the Fellowship Grant Program for FY twenty-four. Um, beyond grant making, um, uh, we, again, uh, while we try to be reflective practitioners in our work, we also uh, want to look internally uh, in the, at the agency to make sure that um, if we have expectations of our grantees, particularly around uh, the concepts of IDEA, that we as staff um, are also doing that work and, and, and engaged in that lift. Um, and so uh, this month, we have a couple of opportunities to work with um, uh, a consultant who specializes in, in IDEA concepts. Um, and so all staff are participating in that again, to really build our understanding of and commitment to um, equity.
And let me, let me just punctuate that for a minute, David, because what we didn't want to do is to do all of this wonderful work around diversity for how we interact with our grantees and forget about the equity and diversity and inclusion and access with our staff. So we're putting extra effort into making sure we're both reflected inside as well as surprised, uh, reflective outside as well. So just wanted to make sure that we put that commitment on the table. For the staff that are listening, our intention was not to ignore the staff. And we want to make sure that, that our diversity lens is everywhere. It's a three hundred and sixty-degree lens.
Thanks Reggie. Um, something new and exciting coming up in the Marketing Communications Department is uh, we're launching a monthly newsletter uh, starting in January. I don't wanna steal JR's thunder, but I know he'll share out. Um, as soon as it's uh, there's, there's more shape to it. Um, but you know, some of the, the, the goals are really to be able to, to provide updates um, on a regular basis to the community and also uh, you know, resources as well. But more will follow uh, on that from the marketing.
And when JR presents that, I wanna, I wanna have a statement of how, what medium will we use to get the newsletter out? Because we know that the website is necessary if not sufficient. Are we gonna go out to neighborhood centers? We're gonna go out to churches and post it? I wanna understand how do we go to our audiences at all of their various forms um, with this great content? But we can cover that later.
Great, great. Um, moving into some staff updates. Um, the last time we met, I mentioned that uh, staff uh, was going to work with uh, an organizational development consultant, Shereen Williams. Uh, I know most of the commissioners are, are familiar with Shereen. She did some work with, with them uh, earlier in the year. Um, and so Shereen engaged with staff in three workshops in late November. Um, with the goal of identifying issues of concern and, and helping us put a plan in place to build a cohesive and positive workplace environment. Um, so uh, I'm hoping personally over the holidays to give some really thought to that as to what that might look like. And of course, to pull staff into um, uh, into, into shaping that um, so it best reflects um, what it is their, their needs um, are, or their identified needs are. And then uh, finally, I just want to give a quick uh, hiring update. Uh, we have a wonderful new executive assistant, Ashley Lynch. I don't know if Ashley is on the call. I'm hoping she is. Um, but she's already hit the ground running and uh, is just uh, bright, wonderful, positive and a really wonderful addition to the team. So I'm, I'm personally very grateful to have her here. Um, and I know you'll all welcome her and you'll hear from her uh, in, as we move forward.
Welcome, Ashley.
Yes. Um, I don't know if she's on screen. I think she's around, so um, the
I've been scanning. I don't see her.
Um, and then finally, we'll have a, a new grant manager, Terrence Brand, who's scheduled to join us uh, on January third. And, and so he'll be a, a new addition to the Grants Department. So we're busting at the seams, we are. So um, that's everything from me, Reggie. Back to you.
Thank you. That was a hefty report. Thank you. So commissioners or staff, any questions or comments? I know we have a lot to do, but this is important. So anything that David commented on that you wanna question or comment or? Nothing? Good. So we'll go to finance. Kimber. Thank you, Dave.
Good evening. Yes, thank you. Thank you for that update. Uh, I'm actually gonna give my time to Brian to give us the update. Good evening, everyone. Hi, Brian.
Good evening, Kimber. Good evening, everyone. My name is Brian Ayande. I'm the Resource Allocation Officer. Tonight I'm wearing a plaid shirt, I'm an Afro-Hispanic male. Um, um, if you could, Patrick, could you please pull up the budget report, the Budget Balance Report? Um, and in this report, which we provide on a monthly basis, it shows the budget on, based on the various different categories or classifications. Uh, two particular areas, uh, where the legislation is written. It says that no more than twenty-two percent of our total budget can be allocated to the admin section of our budget, which is uh, everything else outside of the grants that we issue to the community. Um, and then it also states that no less than, no less than seventy-eight percent can be uh, allocated to grants. Uh, our allocations to, to date are uh, I believe it was eighty-two and eighteen, but I didn't, I didn't uh, actually put that in this report. But what this report does show you is the initial budget, the revised budget, and then where we are to date. Um, as David alluded to a little bit earlier, we have transitioned to a new financial management system. And in that transition, there uh, was a delay or there is a delay uh, due to some funding being classified in, in the wrong cohort. Uh, that is being worked out with the OCFO right now. Um, but the, we found a plan to work forward, to move forward and to get things back on track in terms of the number of purchase orders that we established.
So Brian, as, as best you can predict it, how much later might various grantees get their money than they would have had that not been that system glitch? I just wanna get a sense of what pain might they be feeling?
Okay. Uh, and so at this time, on any other year prior to this uh, transition, we probably would have had close to forty to fifty percent of the purchase orders established. And then it would have been uh, based on when the uh, grantees submit their invoices. And this year, uh, we look like we have somewhere in the neighborhood of fifty-two percent of the grants executed, but the purchase order is just probably more like two or three percent is actually been established. So to answer your question, it's probably going to take us uh, to transition, to translate that into payments. We're probably talking um, mid-January to early February.
And so how much later is that than they would have gotten it normally?
A couple of months. Two, two, three months, two, three months.
And we are communicating this aggressively to them and doing all we can to ease the pain?
Um, David.
So Reggie, yes. Um, so the, the good thing was that we were ahead of the curve or ahead of the ball, whatever you wanna call it. Um, a- and then uh, we got stalled. Um, so I, I, I think we're only probably a month, six weeks behind. Um, the, we're working closely with the OCFO, so based on a conversation I had with them uh, last week um, a- and then further movement today, um, I reached out to all of the affected grantees to, to explain the situation and to give them a better sense of when they could expect purchase orders to be created. So um, so that communication has gone ahead.
I mean, the reason I bring that, obviously, we want to do right by our grantees as much as possible. And, and while the, the system glitch, as I understand it, was not CAH's fault, still the grantee doesn't care. All they see is they're not getting their money. So I wanted us to be overly sensitive to that, but also I wanted whoever from the public are listening and certainly for the commissioners, we're out there in the street and people come up to us and say, this is my complaint, right? So I wanted us to understand the context in which this happened. It was a glitch that happened from the DC government, not us. We're trying to fix it as much as we can. We have a, a solution that will get it fixed faster than just fixing the system. Uh, and that hopefully is not more than a month to six weeks delay payment to these people. I want us to have that message clear amongst us as well. So uh, is anyone who has heard from a grantee about this sort of issue that they wanna bring to the table now? Or do we feel prepared to address this issue if it comes up in conversations? Commissioners in particular? Good. Okay, Brian.
Okay. Um, and so one, one of the things that I also look forward to is I, I had constant conversation with David. So I look to hopefully identify some additional resources within the agency that will help us uh, expedite the process as much as we can to the extent of establishing the requisitions which eventually turn into purchase orders. Um, if there's any questions with regards to the numbers here, I'm willing to address them now. What I can point out right now is one particular thing. And that is with the, if you look at the bottom of the report where it says government subsidies and grants, um, the total budget that's allocated is thirty-seven million. Of the thirty-seven million dollars, one point nine has actually been paid out uh, in, in grants. Uh, and those are probably predominantly uh, general operating support as the funding for those grants are, are in place. Not all of it is what general operating, but the majority of it is. We have five point nine million dollars that has been, excuse me, six point four million dollars that has been established in purchase orders and then another million dollars that is in the process of converting to purchase orders. So at this point, I'll stop there to look to see if there's any questions.
So again, I mean, it, just to the casual eye, for twenty-seven point five six million dollars to be available budget, uh, that's not money that we can spend elsewhere. Is that money that just hasn't gone out to people? Uh, what does that mean?
Okay. So in, if you, if you recall, um, back in the September meeting, we uh, recommended eight hundred and ninety-two uh, grants over, I wanna say ten or eleven programs. And so um, that funding represents uh, approximately twenty, uh, no, the total budget is thirty-seven million. So I would say that funding, the eight hundred and ninety-two grants is probably somewhere in the neighborhood of uh, thirty-two million, David, or Terrell, feel free to jump in on that number, but that's just an estimate. There is still a portion that has yet to be paneled or uh, a NOFA to go out, meaning Notice of Funding Availability. And so that money will be, um, I guess will, the application process will begin shortly.
Okay. So once again, I'm from Texas and I'm sort of dense. Help me understand relative to where we would want to be. Relative to where we were last year when there was no system glitch, or relative to anything that would seem natural to a grantee. Has the money gone out and people are gonna receive it on time? Is it slowed down? Is there more in the available budget than we would have had? I'm just trying to figure out, is, with so little to be committed and obligated and so much to be in the available budget, it feels like something's wrong. Am I misreading?
Uh, no, sir. Go ahead, David.
No, the only thing I was gonna say, so the, the way they, they use the word obligation uh, in, in district government is when a purchase order is created, the money is obligated. Um, so, so while we have obligated the money by issuing grant awards, it's not obligated in the financial system until the purchase order is created. So um, so, so that, that uh, column available budget is not a, a, a true, a, a true um, uh, uh, representation of how much money we have. In the general operating support grant uh, line item, we should have about twenty million dollars and we've obligated our, we've issued grants to the equivalent of about nineteen point five million. It's just that they only um, uh, only a small num- uh, amount of the general operating support dollars have been oblig- financially obligated, so.
It's just a matter of us now getting the money out of the door. Is that?
Exactly. Yeah.
And, and we are working on those purchase orders being done such that we get it out the door with no more than four to six weeks later than they would have expected.
Yeah, I would, yeah, that's the, that's the goal. You know, I'm really, um, while we had this glitch, um, Brian and his team Kia, um, they were continuing to sort of get all of the grants that were being pushed their way ready um, until the, the coding was correct. So as, they're sort of all in a holding pattern at the moment. And uh, today we saw them move again. So I'm really optimistic that purchase, we'll start seeing purchase orders for the other grant programs at the beginning of January. And so grant managers will notify grantees straight away so they can submit invoices.
Hector has his hand up. Hector?
Yeah, my, my question is, at what level are we, and I think you may have mentioned it, I, Brian, I apologize if, if I missed it. Uh, what percentage of the grants do you already have purchase orders created for? So when this glitch gets corrected, that it could be managed as promptly as possible to get the money out?
Okay. So to answer you, Hector, I, like I said, I, it's probably about two percent that's actually been obligated in the form of purchase orders. But in terms of the glitch, we're not waiting for the glitch to be resolved. We found another way to just proceed now. So we're beginning immediately with pushing purchase orders through, pushing requisitions through the system.
Is there a possibility of like a parking, that you park them just so that any changes coming in, it could be modified so that it could be expedited? I mean, I'm just thinking about these artists that are really expecting this money to come because ma- you know, to be good on that promise.
Um, again, what I, what I can do at this point is I can look and have additional conversations with David. And maybe we can identify one or two people that might help us with uh, expediting the entering of the requisitions. I'm fairly confident, I have a competent staff that has been in, kind of in this position before. When we were giving out the relief grants, we had a very small, finite period of time. And we gave out hundreds of purchase orders, or we issued hundreds of purchase orders in a very short period of time. So I, like I said, I- So like I said, I'm fairly confident in the staff that I have, that we can get that done.
Not concerned about the two percent that's already been done, it's the ninety-eight that is not.
I understand what you're saying, yes, sir.
That's huge when you look at it.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, you all are clearly the experts. So we defer to your expertise and how you can get it out. The message that was sent, which I think you embrace as well, is from the artist's standpoint, they need the money, they're expecting the money. And so they don't want to hear the excuses about why it is there. So whatever we can do to expedite, to cut the corners, not do anything illegal, not do anything immoral, but whatever we can do to shortcut it so that what they feel is not very different from what they expected. That's, that's our goal. And so we defer to the experts to how might they get it. If there's anything we can do, if there's a call that I can make as chair, anything like that, I'm happy to do it, but I'm also happy to let you do your work because you're the expert.
Yes, sir. And I, and I'm a big proponent of communication, communication, communication. So to the extent possible, I will provide weekly updates or bi-weekly updates to David. And I'm going to ask that that information be funneled out to the various commissioners so that if you get questions regarding what's happening with their grants, perhaps you can give some sort of update prior to the next commission meeting.
Great, thank you. Anything else from finance on you, from you or Brian, Brian or Kimber?
I think that's it at this point that we can truly discuss. I would look forward to in the new year, we are going to start to have conversations regarding the fiscal year twenty-four proposed budget, as well as we prepare for the oversight hearing that will happen probably in February or March. And so these are things that are a retrospective look at what the agency has done in fiscal year twenty-two.
Great. So questions from others? Thank you, Kimber, thank you, Brian. Speaking of grants, Gretchen, Grants Committee?
Speaking of grants, hello, everyone. And almost happy holidays. Well, we're in the middle of them, so continued happy holidays. I'm a black female wearing black glasses. The hair changes every other meeting, so we're not going to talk about that color, everyone. In terms of the Grants Committee, are you going to put the report on the screen? Okay, there we go. What we've started doing over the last couple of years is having what we call a Grants Revamp. This was phase two of it. And at that time, we are looking at all of our grants in totality. We're peeling them apart, making sure that everything is the way we want it to be, the way we've been told that it should be by the public, and to make sure that our idea principles are reflected throughout. We did have the Grants Revamp, as David mentioned. That was in November. And then we've had a recent meeting of the Grants Committee on December the eighth. In terms of updates, and a couple of these things were mentioned by David, but we'll get into a little bit more of it. The capacity building grant, Terrell, do you want to speak on the bullets that are there?
Yep. Hi, everyone, Terrell Johnson. I am the Senior Grants Officer for CAH. I'm an African-American male, wearing a blue sweater and a gray jacket. So as you guys know, the FY twenty-two Capacity Building Grant was our pilot program. We had about ninety organizations that joined eight communities of practice. The motto and thought behind that community of practice is that we can conquer and learn more going into a problem as a group than we will individually. During the community of practices, you see large organizations, small organizations, dance organizations mixed with theater. So it was a nice grouping and thought process. We got really great feedback. Our eight community of practice had things like procession planning, board development, marketing outreach. So they had a number of topics that they had the opportunity to be a part of. We learned a ton in that one. Our first one was only open to GLS applicants. So as a pilot program, we opened it up for the GLS grant. The FY twenty-three, our new one, we will open that up to new applicants. And we may even have some cohorts for individuals as well. So we're excited about that. One of the great things that came out of the pilot program is that we built a solid network of consultants. So thought leaders on all different areas that we are able to tap and get their expertise over to our grantees. So that's a little bit about our capacity building grant.
Wonderful, thank you. Fab R, again, David mentioned that in his report. But Kevin, do you have anything to add on that? Kevin is our Grants Manager for Fab.
Hi, everyone. Yes, my name is Kevin Hasser, and I'm, this is my pleasure in managing this program now for the third year. For those of you joining, I am a Caucasian male with brown hair and a blue quarter zip sweater. Yeah, the program closes at ten PM tomorrow. So for anybody listening, this is, it's a great opportunity, especially if you haven't received a grant from the commission before. There are those organizations out there still. And so we do hope that everyone who is eligible applies. It is a, is a great entry point to the commission. And so if you're interested in seeing what it's like to apply for commission funds, then please do that. You can reach out to me directly. I'll be in the office all day tomorrow, helping people as they are arranging the final components to their applications. And by the way, that closes at ten PM Eastern Time tomorrow. That's firm deadline. As far as the status of the program goes so far, obviously, we'll know a lot more when it closes tomorrow. But the applications do appear to be on par with the last two years. I just checked right now, there's about a hundred and fifteen either submitted or in draft, which is great. That means there's a lot of excitement for the program. And there's been a really positive response from the community over the last few years. The rest of the world seems to be coming out of the pandemic, but it does seem to be affecting arts and humanities organizations still. So they are very grateful.
Absolutely, thank you so much, Kevin. We also looked at the FY twenty-four Arts and Humanities Fellowship Program review. And we say twenty-four because we've already had the grant for twenty-three. Carrie, are you, there you are. Carrie's the Grants Manager for Arts and Humanities Fellowship Program. So would you like to speak a little bit about that?
Sure, good evening, everyone. My name is Carrie Kaliba. I am one of the grant managers for the Arts and Humanities Fellowship Program. I am a white female with dark hair and a bun and a, joining the blue sweater crew for the evening. So the Arts and Humanities Fellowship Program, we've been doing a pretty deep dive review, both of our program and also how some of our fellows are doing across the country and regionally to see what we can do to bring our fellowship program into the next stage, wanting to continue to serve and support our artists in the city who do so, so much and are such a great representation of the city. So we are undergoing that process. We have a couple of plans coming up to engage with the community, share some more of our ideas. And the recommendations that we are making will be submitted for the January Grants Committee meeting and then come to the full commission. We're very excited.
We are excited about this one, we sure are. Okay, fellow commissioners, we have two votes that are on the table. As many of you know, GLS, the GLS brand has been around for a while. It's been one of our most popular ones because it's one that enables our grantees to spend the money without a lot of specific direction. And it's been very popular and it's been very good for everyone out there. One of the things that we've done for the last couple of years is to make sure that every single applicant is receiving a grant versus having, you know, the panel rate them and then cutting it off at a certain point. COVID has really, really hurt so many of our artists here and really hurt everybody that's involved in the GLS piece of the grant. So our recommendation is that we continue funding all eligible applicants in FY twenty-four. That was the recommendation brought to the Grants Committee and from the Grants Committee. So we're forwarding that to the full commission for a vote. We could probably do, first of all, are there any questions on that recommendation that we continue to fund GLS as all applicants? Okay, I'd like to go to the next recommendation, and then we'll do a vote on both of them. This is the Community Ambassador Program Recommendation. And Terrell, this is your baby, talk about it.
Yes, so we are really excited about the Ambassador Program. One of the questions that came from commissioners, as well as the community, is how CAH engaging with communities of color? How are we doing outreach and those type of things? Over the last ten months or so that I've been here, I've had the chance to have some really in-depth conversations with applicants and who went through the application process. A lot of times, when we're going through the process and reviewing the application and giving feedback, they had already completed the application. So the feedback that I was giving them was great, but it wasn't helping for the current year. So it would be applied to next year. So one of the things that we thought about doing is how about, how can we be proactive in making sure that these communities have the tools that we need? So right now, we are suggesting the CAH Community Ambassador Program. It will be a six-week training program designed for individuals and organizations of the global majority to successfully apply for grant applications. During that six-week process, they'll have two sessions per week. And some of their program focus will be on the artist statement, different types of grants. So we want to actually not only prepare them for applying for a CAH grant, but also other grant programs, how to research them, how to know what they're eligible for. We'll go over eligibility and requirements, the types of voice, future-oriented project center, the personal tone. A lot, a big piece of when you're talking about writing grant applications is the tone of the application. So that's a whole piece that a lot of people don't use. Telling your story with the data. A lot of organization and artists will say, you know, I had this many people at the show. Well, how do you incorporate that into your data plan and kind of really get that out? Writing a budget and project narrative. So those are some of the key compartments. The thought is during that six-week process, we'll do the deep dive into each piece of the grant application so that at the end of the process, they'll have a kind of a toolkit so that they can apply to any grant that we offer as well. The program will provide stipends to participants to be used towards varied removal. One of the things that came up in our conversations were things like, if you get two tickets in DC, you can't get clean hands for two hundred, three hundred dollars. And then people have to make a decision between applying for a grant or, you know, that I may or may not get versus paying this three hundred dollars for two tickets. Upon completion, participants will become official CAH Community Ambassadors. This will address our desire to really get into the communities where we're not in. So they can actually talk to other artists, they can promote the organization and more. And we will begin to get into those organizations of color. The other thing is that we will have cohorts in both English and Spanish, as well as cohorts that focus solely on individuals and then on organizations as well. And that's just a little bit about the program. Happy to answer any questions that you have about that.
Any questions?
No, some of us are huge fans of this, but it may be new to others. So certainly, any questions for clarification we want to cover there?
I have a question, this is Mariah. What, so how is this information being delivered? Are you doing, is this remote? Are you doing video chats? Or do people have to come in in person? How does it work?
Great question, Mariah. We thought, gave some thought to that. So we wanted to do a hybridic approach. So one remote day during the week. We want to be sensitive to full-time working artists. So having a Tuesday evening that they can do at night. But we really want them to engage and build a community. So we want to have Saturday sessions where they actually come in and connect with us, our commissioners, and each other to really get that feel. They won't be penalized. We'll make sure we have some virtual options available because we do want to provide access. Not everyone can make it now. But we really want them to have the chance to connect in person and really build those bonds beyond. And so that when they leave the program, they also have the support system throughout so that they can bounce ideas off of. If they have trouble with their grant application, they can have someone that they know they can call, things of that nature. So we really want to build a community.
That's so great. I, I'm so thrilled that you all are offering these sessions. And it will really help with inclusion. So this is just wonderful, thank you.
Thank you for your question, Mariah. Anyone else? Okay, let's scroll down a little bit more. Okay, the committee recommendations are, be it resolved that the commission fund all eligible applicants to the FY twenty twenty-four General Operating Support Grant Program, and be it resolved that the commission launch the CAH Community Ambassador Program, a six-week training program designed for individuals and organizations of the global majority to successfully apply for grant programs.
Good. Any discussion?
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved, so moved.
We don't have to in this context. When the committee chair puts a resolution up, we don't have, my notes say, we don't have to do that, but we just can go to discussion. Does not require a second and can't proceed directly to discussion. But thank you for the motion and the second, it's good. So any discussion?
No, it's a great program, and I'm so glad the component of bilingualism is finally incorporated. I applaud that because I know that so many people in the D N X community are unaware of this opportunity. And now it comes the opportunity to also put it out there. What can the communities that they are in, that they could work with? So I look forward to that kind of engagement. So thank you, it's a great idea, by the way. I applaud it and thank you, Terrell. That's great.
Agreed, agreed. So I'm going to take the vote now. All in favor, I, as I call your name, or no, or a no vote. Stacy?
Yes.
Cora? Maggie?
Corey, yes.
Great, Maggie?
Yes.
Juanice? Natalie? Kimber?
Yes.
Mariah?
Yes.
Carla?
Yes.
Hector?
Yes.
Gretchen?
Yes.
It passes, thank you. Thank you very much to the Grants Committee and to the staff. This is so amazing. It may seem small to some, but it will be huge to others. So, so thank you for this. Anything else from Grants, Gretchen?
Nope, that's it.
Good. I know we, we wanted to finish at seven, but we have three new business items that are really, really important. So bear with us a little bit longer. First, an update on the Executive Director's search. Maggie Fitzpatrick, Maggie?
Thank you, Chairman Denley. We've had a significant amount of interest in the role of the Executive Director of the Commission for the Arts and Humanities, which I'm delighted about. The quality of candidates is very, very strong. Just in way of process, we have a selection committee. The selection committee will make a recommendation, and our hope is in January, to the full commission. The full commission must approve our recommendation. And at that point, a package is prepared for the chairman to submit to the committee of the whole. And the committee of the whole then proceeds with its work to both approve and swear in the new executive director. So I would say, Mr. Chairman, we are on track in terms of our timeline. I want to thank everyone in the community who has expressed an interest in the role. I will tell you that I am delighted to hear from so many candidates who have a sense that things are changing at the commission and that there's great energy and great movement and a real, honest, and authentic commitment to diversity and inclusion and to serving the community as a whole. So more to come, but I'm happy to take questions if there are any.
Any questions? I will comment on the point that many are concerned about, but perhaps would not want to express in a public meeting. This will be the sixth or seventh ED in a short period of time. And so there's a great concern that we choose very well this time, that we find someone that will stick with us. And I think that what you're saying, Maggie, is the excitement that we're hearing from the candidates suggests that this is something they see as a real opportunity for them and they want to come and they want to stay here for a while, if not retire in this position. So we can't guarantee that. But note that the search committee is very sensitive to, let's not just go through the motion, put another person here that's going to leave in X amount of time. That is not at all what the committee is concerned about. They want to make sure that the mindset and behavior and sensitivity and all of those sort of characteristics of the candidate fit with someone who will come in, do a good job, and all of those sort of characteristics of the candidate fit with someone who will come in, do a good job and will stick. Did I say that correctly, Maggie?
Yes, absolutely.
Questions, comments? Good. Thank you, Maggie. And thank you to the search committee. At the September meeting, I shared two aspirations that at least I had for the commission and that a number of people seem to be embracing, both within the agency and outside of the agency. The first is this notion of us creating a foundation that's either connected to, a part of, or or somehow enabled by this commission that would allow us to provide fiscal sponsorship capabilities to small arts organizations and artists that can't do a five oh one C three and therefore cannot receive tax deductible dollars. And we would help them be able to receive those through this foundation as a fiscal sponsor. We've later discovered or stumbled upon this foundation, if we can put it in place, will also help the second aspiration, which is to create a DC version of Art Basel. And so what we want to do is first hear from Jeff on the work towards and timeline towards establishing a foundation connected with the commission. And then I'm going to defer to Carla Sims to talk about the Art Basel Miami project and how we want to evolve Art All Night into that. And to include that Carla, myself, Lauren Glover, Terrell Johnson and Melvin Witten all went to Art Basel a couple of weeks ago to experience firsthand and had some great meetings. But I don't want to still thunder too much. So Jeff, first, why don't you talk about where we are with the foundation?
Sure. Thank you. My name is Shepard Scott. I'm the chief of staff at the commission. I'm a white male wearing glasses and the fourth or fifth blue sweater of the evening. So just a few things real quick on establishing a foundation. It's not a, a, a new concept in the government for an agency to have been attached, five oh one C three nonprofit foundation that helps to support that agency's work. The DC Public Library has a DC Public Library Foundation, the DC Public Schools, D P S has the DC Publication Education Fund. In both of these instances, these are separate entities from the agency. They have their own staff, their own board and their own budget with, which they use to operate. In order to do this for ourselves, we'll need to have the, the appropriate authorization in our legislation to do so. So as Chairperson Denly has, has mentioned, he's been speaking with some of the council members and, you know, getting their feedback on this. What we will be doing is drafting the articles, articles of the corporation and the mission statement for this organization over the coming weeks. And once that, we have that in a place that we look, that looks to have it pretty good, along with draft legislation that would authorize us to work with this foundation. We've proposed that we would meet with Chairman Mendelson of the council so that he's aware of it because we would submit it to him through the committee of the whole for consideration in the council, assuming that, you know, his reception is positive, we can go ahead with that submission. We would, we believe the best way to do this is submitting it as its own standalone bill as opposed to trying to incorporate it within the F Y twenty four Budget Support Act, just in the interest of time. So we would look to do that in probably February or so, if we can, to get that submitted. Then once we get that submitted, then it becomes, of course, the, the property of the council. You know, we would go through probably a hearing process. The, the bill itself would be voted on twice. So it would take, you know, several months for that to move through the process of getting approved. Of course, while that's going on, you know, there's can be some additional groundwork going on such as recruiting new board members, finalizing the articles incorporation and all that stuff. So that assuming the, the legislation is approved and we are statutorily authorized to work with this foundation, that we can submit those articles of the corporation to establish a nonprofit corporation in District Columbia. And once that's established, then we would submit to the Internal Revenue Service for five oh one C three tax exempt status. That can take between three and six months for determination to come back from the IRS. So if all goes, if all the trains run on time and we keep our fingers crossed, we believe we can get this done by July or end of summer. But there's of course some big chunks that are, you know, going to be outside of anything that we can control for, mainly with the council, with the IRS and those outside entities. But that's what we're looking at right now. We've been meeting with some other folks, Washington Area Lords for the Arts. And we'll be speaking with DC Public Library Foundation to get some more information on how, you know, they established themselves originally and the things that we can, you know, take away from, from them to include in our own, in our own foundation work.
Great. Questions, comments from anyone?
Hi, this is Mariah. I have a couple of questions. One is, does that mean that we are basically going to have two budgets that we're going to need to support with, with our, with our budget? I'm a little confused about how that's going to work.
So the, the foundation is, is its own entity. Would, that would be separate from the, from the commission as an agency. So it would be, it would have its own budget that would, it would be responsible for, you know, there's several different ways that, you know, it could be funded. It could be funded, you know, partially from us, but it in large part, you know, it would function as, as other nonprofits do and, and fundraise to support its own activities. So it wouldn't be something, we wouldn't be managing two budgets or taking our budget from, you know, our government budget and splitting it necessarily.
Does that, does that answer a question, Mariah?
Semi. I mean, it sounds as if it, it might very well be somewhat supported by the commission itself. Is that correct?
It could be. Yes, it could be. And I think that's, your question is a well, a good question because we need to sort out what that really means. But it is a separate budget for the foundation. They do have the ability to fundraise in a way that we cannot fundraise at the commission. But the commission could decide to take a portion of our budget and grant it to this foundation as well. So we have to figure out how that works.
Okay, I see. I, I think I see. But I, that, that, I just have a little bit of a concern about that. Just.
We'll make, keep that question on, on, on the table. Let's make sure that we sort that out as we work through if and how. It really is if and how we can create this foundation. It's not a done deal yet. We have to sort through all of that. So that's an issue we want to address. Carla, I think you had a question?
Stephanie said July twenty twenty four then, right?
It's coming July. We're, we're just the hope.
July twenty twenty three.
Yeah.
You said July twenty twenty three?
Because you said it would take six months for the IRS to do their thing.
That's a long end. If we got, if we get them to do it on the short end of the three months, that would put us around July, we think. But six months would, would push more towards the fall, like September or so.
And this is not a commitment, but some of us have managed to work to get five oh one C threes in three months. I've had that personal experience a number of times. Does that answer a question, Carla? Any other questions, comments? So like I said, this is an if and how. We'd like very much to make this work, but we got to cross our Ts and dot Is. So your question, Mariah, is a good question we have to address. And if others pop up, we will address it along the way. Jeff is taking the lead on it, but we have a lot of people counseling us on how we can do this. Anything else, Jeff?
I think that's it. Thank you. Oh.
Ask a question. Yeah. How does one memorialize this so it becomes truly institutionalized? So that it has, you know, a long shelf life. So it doesn't become, let's say, a project that, that, you know, in forty years from now, when Chairman Lee, Vanny leaves, that some other chairman may abolish it or.
Forty years?
Oh yeah, you, you got life, life here. But the point simply is, how, how does one prevent it and what has to be the challenge there, that it would not be dissolved at a later time? Secondly, initial funding for a foundation. So it has the money to be able to pay for its team members is critical. I realize that you're counting on some volunteers for this process initially. You know, and, and the other one too is, has there been a thorough check within the law that funds from the commission can be used to fund this foundation? I mean, has that been checked thoroughly so that it doesn't become a point of contention with the city council?
So to answer your last question first, that would be likely part of the legislation that we would submit, the draft proposed legislation to authorize us to, to do that with our funding, if that's the, what we choose to do. And that also, that's how it gets memorialized is it will become part of law. You know, it'll become, you know, within our authorizing legislation or enabling statutes that we are able to have this organization and partner with them for these purposes. And this is how it's done. So, you know, beyond putting it in law, I mean, that's, that's the most. Now, of course, laws can be amended later on, but that's the, that's how it would be memorialized and kept intact for the, the future.
Does that answer your questions, Hector?
Yes, it does. Thank you.
But once again, these are all the questions that have to be put on the table. So as we work this thing through, we've thought of all the issues, we've addressed them a priori, as opposed to stumbling into them after the fact. So keep those questions coming. Good. Anything else on that one?
Yeah, I had my hand up. I just, I'm very excited about this, the idea of a foundation. Many years ago, we wanted to raise money without the normal government ambitions that we had to deal with. But the only way to do it was to have people donate money to, into the district general fund. Well, that wasn't going to happen. Finally, in the last legislation, they did give the commission the opportunity, am I saying this right, Jeff? To raise funds. But again, it was not separated out. So the idea that Reggie has of coming up with a foundation to raise monies to, to do this is probably one of the most exciting things that I've heard in quite a while. So I'm really, really happy about this. Sure, it takes a lot of time to work things out, but we've got all the people working with us that'll make this happen. I'm very excited about it.
And the good news, we do have the precedence, at least of a library, having done it. So it's not as though we're groundbreaking for the first time. It is groundbreaking for us, but it's not necessarily groundbreaking for the city. So, so thank you. So again, I'm.
And there are several.
I'm sorry, Jeff?
I was just, I was just going to say that there are several other state arts agencies in the country that have similar situations. So there is that as well as precedent.
Great, great. Well, thank you. Thank you. Godspeed to you, Jeff. So lastly, but not lastly, not, what is it? Last but not least, however it goes. Carla, let's talk about this Art All Night, Art Basel idea and the, the trip that was made to Miami a couple of weeks ago.
All right. Patrick, if you put the slides up. And I know we are, we're really short on time, so I'll make this really quick. If you're not familiar with Art Basel, it's an international arts fair that started in Basel, Switzerland. You can go to the next slide. And now has locations in Miami, Hong Kong and, and in twenty twenty two, they did Paris. This is a privately owned and managed fair and it works also in collaboration with the host cities, local institutions to help grow and develop arts programs. It's provided a platform for galleries to show and sell their works to buyers and it's gained a large international audience of spectators, enthusiasts, brands, and, and other students and others as well. On December third, Reggie and I, along with several representatives from the Department of Small and Local Businesses, Business Development, went to Art Basel to do some research and to understand the event histories, the best practices and to get some advice on how, you know, we might integrate their, their brand of programming in our event, Art All Night, and also to explore opportunities to collaborate. You can go to the next slide. When it comes to collaborating, they introduced an initiative that they call Art Basel Cities. And it's a project between Art Basel and Cities Worldwide to kind of create this cultural event and programming throughout the year. So that was good news for us because we want to maintain some autonomy in what we do. We didn't want to necessarily assume the Art Basel brand. We want to keep the brand or develop our own brand. And so this provides the, the initiative that they have with their Art Basel Cities gives us that autonomy. So we would want to build on our program, Art All Night, and provide some additional support and funding to, to, I guess the bottom line would be to implement a communication strategy. I think, you can go, okay, that's fine. The big takeaway here is that we want to benefit from the lessons learned from previous years of doing Art All Night and to take inspiration from Art Basel. And to do that, we would primarily improve on the media marketing and promotions of Art All Night. And then we want to add a new element, which the commission would actually be the facilitator and curator of. And that is a marketplace, to create a marketplace to sell and promote the works of our homegrown, local and national internet and international creatives. You can go to the next slide. This is just kind of an example of what our goals and objectives and potential strategy could be. But the bottom line here is we're going to elevate the profile and career opportunities of our creatives, the, our local creatives. And we want to support and continue to, to grow the creative industry and cultural activities in DC. Next slide, please. This is just a rough sample timeline of what we'd be looking to do. And I think the main thing here is that we're going to engage with our stakeholders early and upfront to make sure they're a part of the planning process. We'll launch a, a media and marketing campaign. And we would then slowly integrate some of our ideas into the twenty twenty three Art All Night program with the intent to launch a more reimagined initiative in twenty twenty four. Are there any questions?
Questions, comments, or if Lauren or Terrell or Melvin wanted to comment as well because they were there in Miami as part of this as well.
How do we incorporate present partners in this program? Or, or is the commission taking over the entire program?
No, this is, it would still be run by the division or the Department of Small, Local and Business Development. We, the only thing we would, right, we would continue to support it financially, but we would own the, the, the marketplace. For example, the marketplace could be in the convention center, for example, which is what they do at Art Basel. And we would produce that, we, we would take on by identifying a contractor and, and producing that particular event. And then we would be the umbrella, we'd provide kind of umbrella cover through the marketing and media relations to make sure that the branding and the, you know, build national and international awareness around this event, which is what I think has been missing largely.
I'll just add, we're going to work very hard not to bring any ego into this discussion. This is not the commission trying to take over, be in charge, be the lead, but there are many places where we can fit in. And there's a particular role that we can play of this marketplace that Carla's talking about. But this is our thinking with just one small conversation we've had with that department already. And our intention is over the next several months to work with those various partners to really sort out who has what role. Let's make sure the roles are really clear. Nobody stepping on anybody's toes and then we can get the most out of, you know, the sum of the parts versus the individual parts. But again, good, very good question, Hector.
Thank you.
Other reactions or from the staff who attended?
Lauren, what do you think? No, I was just saying Carla did a great job of pulling it together and synthesizing everything. And I. No, I was just saying Carla did a great job of pulling it together and, um, synthesizing everything. And I just think that, again, the important thing is, you know, they're very proud, the, the folks who have been working on Art All Night are very proud of what they've been doing and how it's grown and, you know, just our being able to support it financially and work in partnership with another aspect of it will just strengthen the overall footprint, which is what the underlying goal is. So I, I just think that Carla did a wonderful job synthesizing a lot of different ideas.
Melvin, did you want to comment?
Yes, and I also think that the, uh, as Carla said, the marketplace will definitely bring not only an opportunity for our local artists, but it also will bring an opportunity for the international community to participate as well.
Good. Terrell?
I was just going to echo what Lauren said. Uh, Carla, you did a great job of capturing all those pieces. Uh, that was fantastic. Thank you.
Any other reactions? Thank you. Thank you, committee, task force, whatever we're calling this assemblies that's going to help us move this thing forward. And, and both of these are heavy lifts. I mean, this Art All Night into Art Basel concept, this foundation concept, they're both heavy lifts. But I think that the benefit far outweighs the effort to do it. Uh, but it has to be something the full commission wants to do. So I really want to hear from anyone who has a concern or a pushback or, or reactions that aren't necessarily favorable. I want to hear that because I want to make sure that this is something we all want to do. We need all hands on deck to make it happen. Commissioners and staff. We need everybody on deck. Uh, with that, I think we're at the end. Are there any, is there any other new business from any of the commissioners? If not, uh, thank you to the staff and the commissioners. The happiest of holidays to everyone. Please rest, relax, repair, rejuvenate, re-energize. Because as you see, we have great ambitions for the next year, and we need everyone fully charged up. So take the time with friends and family to relax and enjoy yourself. Um, and for the January meeting, we would like for that very much to be in person. The intention is to have a post-holiday celebration at the January meeting. Uh, so we're hoping that everyone can attend, uh, staff and commissioners, and we'll try to make it fun and festive, uh, post the other holidays. But in the meantime, thank you all so much for your great work this calendar year. Thanks in advance for the work ahead of us. Happy holidays and enjoy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Happy holidays.